Name is Mark and we're going to call this meeting of the Board of Trustees for the Village of Cambridge to order. Roll call, please.
Trustee Brian Nag will be a bit late. Franklin Whitmore.
Here.
Hollenbeck.
Here.
Phelps.
Here.
McNally.
Here. Okay, if we can stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Lisa, can you tell us about whether this meeting has been properly posted?
The agenda was posted in the upper and lower levels of the Amundson Community Center Cambridge Post Office, Badger Park, and the Village website.
Okay, all right, sounds like we're okay. We've got a presenter and then after this presenter, we'll have a meeting open for some public comment. But at this time, can we ask Paul Blount with Cambridge EMS to come up?
Can I have Lieutenant come up with you too, just in case we get a question answered?
If you can introduce yourselves, gentlemen.
I'm Lieutenant George Annesberger.
Chief Paul Blount, good to see everyone again.
All right, nice to see you, Paul.
Nice to see you. In front of you is a quarterly report for Cambridge Area EMS. I don't get, often get an opportunity to meet with you and come before you, so I just kind of wanted to update you on where we were at for our end of quarter. And then I also included in your packet a year-end report for Cambridge Area EMS and just a few discussion topics I wanted to run through with you real quick. I know you have a full meeting tonight and a full agenda. Village of Cambridge in your first quarter led the way for our calls, which is typical with 53 calls that you'll see in the packet in front of you. That's 38% of our call volume, 38.6. Close second is Oakland at 32. On page two, you'll see a summary of our 2022 incidents that I wanted to just highlight for you. You'll see that the Village of Cambridge again led the way with 213 total calls for 2022, that's EMS calls. Again, a close second is Town of Oakland at 158. After reviewing the numbers for the last couple of years and also after you'll see what your number was last year overall and where you're at quarterly, we're right on track with you having 53 calls in your community, in your area. And then again, with last year's numbers, we're right on track with last year, at least for your community. A summary of our 2022 year-end report is our district did 688 calls. That may not be exact because sometimes fire calls and EMS calls and, you know, I can only speak to EMS. We could get one or two that missed the data. Go ahead if you have a question.
Yeah, I do, Paul. Going back to that second page.
You got it.
I see the municipalities, what we have out of district. Can you explain what that is?
Sure can. So that's a combination of any mutual aid that we may provide to other communities, Fort Atkinson, Lake Mills, Town of Deerfield, Village of Deerfield, could be Stoughton, could be wherever we provide mutual aid, could be through the mutual aid system, it could be just an independent request. We've definitely seen that that number stayed pretty consistent. That 31 last year isn't much different from years before numbers. Again, we participate in MABUS, which most departments do, which is a mutual aid system where they can call for us to provide mutual aid to an area surrounding department. And then, of course, we rely on them quite frequently to provide, you know, aid and assistance to us. So I would definitely point out in that, that as you'll go back to, you know, our out-of-district numbers of seven in the first quarter, obviously, we're potentially up a little bit. And those most frequently that we go to are Deerfield. Town of Deerfield and Village of Deerfield are usually our most frequent mutual aid that we provide. So, good question.
To that end, do you have data on how many times you have requested mutual aid?
I could provide that at a future meeting, for sure. So, that's a great question. We ask for mutual aid quite frequently with second call-outs, ambulances back-to-back. This week and a couple of weeks before, we have had a couple of instances where we've been able to get two ambulances out. This week, we had an instance where we were able to, during the day, get two ambulances staffed, one with full-time staff and then had a call about five minutes later with part-time paid-on-call staff. So that's something to, you know, definitely to point out to you. That's not every day that we can do that. We try to have paid-on-call available and volunteers available in the community and it's hard. A lot of times we'll be able to get one ambulance out the door, but two back-to-back has been a challenge for us, as it is for a lot of communities. And, you know, we were able to accomplish that this week. Any other questions on the first couple of pages?
The Village of Cambridge numbers, I think you had mentioned this last time, are higher because of the assisted living. Do you split that out to, you know, how many of our calls are to the assisted living places versus the village?
If you're interested in seeing those numbers in the future, like the other question, I can certainly dive deeper in. When we run reports, you'd have to get pretty in-depth and it would require some hand counting to be able to figure out exactly where. But most certainly, the most consistent call in the Village of Cambridge for EMS is, you know, the independent living, some would call it nursing homes or assisted living homes. So you are correct. And we'll also say that, you know, somewhere in the top three to four is also highways and the areas that run through the Village of Cambridge. A lot of our calls, when we look at our numbers and look at our patients that we care for, we'll find out that they're not necessarily area residents. A lot of traffic through the community, driving through the community every day. So, especially the Village of Cambridge.
And I would not expect you to do a hand count to get me those numbers.
But I certainly would. I certainly will be happy to try to get close. And that's why when I tell you some of these numbers, I just don't want you to think that when I say, for example, a number like 688, if you audited it, it might be 689 or it could be six, you know, 685. But we're as close as we can be with our computer program. So, back to the district calls, 688 last year. Total number of district calls that included an EMS response, 637. Only thing I'd like to point out about that is that EMS and fire most frequently help each other out. So a lot of those calls, when you see the discrepancy there, we're automatically responding with Cambridge Volunteer Fire Department and helping them out. And they do the same for us. There's quite a few calls where we'll be auto-dispatched and there's quite a few calls where we will be requested out if needed. And we do that together quite frequently. A total number of Cambridge Area EMS patient contacts, you'll notice, is 550. And one might say, why? Is there a difference between the number you responded to? Because not all calls that we go on, we actually find a patient, have a patient, or make patient contact. There are quite a few 911 calls these days where someone will say, I saw someone laying by the side of the road. We'll get there and there's nobody laying by the side of the road. And/or if there was, they were just to fix a flat tire and move on. So we have quite a few of those. And it's pretty common in most communities. Total current members is another number I'd like to highlight. We're currently at 25, so have some old information on there. We have grown and we have two or three more applications in processing, hoping to have that number near 30. Any of the additions that we have now, we're fully staffed for full-time staff, so they're all going to be paid-on-call volunteer members or part-time members. So that's the number that continues to grow is paid-on-call and part-time. Anything else I might want to highlight? Last year, we aggressively applied for and received over $170,000 worth of state and federal grant money. Why do I want to highlight that? Is that's money that obviously is coming through federal dollars and state dollars that we applied for. You have to apply for it to receive it. Some of it required pretty significant work, some of it did not. Were simple forms, but we're happy to report that our, you know, our district received $170,000 to support Cambridge Area EMS. Any questions about the reports? Anything that you want to add, Lieutenant?
Well, that double call was the brand-new ambulance.
Okay, that's a good, so that's a good report. That's on the road, so.
Yeah, so the brand-new ambulance took its first call the other day with that being the second-out call, which was partially funded by that, as you guys know, with that grant money. So it's getting its final touches. It should be frontline. Once it gets its final blessing from the state, the state gave it a, its blessing, it just needs a couple touch-ups to make the, to their, the state's, they just changed their supervisor that did all the DOT inspections and stuff like that. But otherwise, it's, the ambulance is rocking and rolling. It's, so.
Is this the ambulance that has that new Lucas?
Yes, actually.
Can you explain what that is? And what that was, the price?
Yeah, I'm going to let him explain it since you just gave it at a presentation.
Yeah, so the Lucas device is a, is one of several brands out there. It is an automatic CPR device. So instead of having all of us take turns doing CPR, taking our hands off the person to rotate out, we'll get tired, compression's not, might not be adequate enough or deep enough or fast enough to sustain the rate to keep the heart, the attempt to keep the heart and the blood circulating going. This device runs on a battery. It's like a power tool. You just set it, forget it, you push a button and it actually will, it's scientifically proven to increase resuscitation rates and survivability due to the fact that it's constantly running, constantly providing an adequate rate and depth of compressions that us as people, we're human, we, sometimes we're faster, sometimes we're slower, so we get tired. Since it's a machine, the only way it gets tired is that the battery dies.
Something that's really new.
I saw it on New Amsterdam.
Good. And that is the device. And it's something that's new. You know, just 10, 15 years ago, we, you know, and even less than that, in this community and others, we're rotating people through. So this is a device that helps save lives. And it helps keep our paramedics' hands free. Paramedics can give in our district about 40 different drugs. That varies depending on district and community. So the paramedic's hands need to be free in a lot of cases to be able to give those drugs and to do those complicated procedures, including insert a needle into someone's chest. So this device is a hands-free device. It frees up other hands to be able to make the work lighter, so.
As an example, I come from two different parts of the country and you, one place we don't have a Lucas device. I actually need to get three or four more of the people just to rotate out CPR. Where I've been here and otherwise that have the device, we can actually run a full arrest or a PNB where we're doing CPR with just three people.
Device was fully paid for by grant, or by a local donation. So no out-of-pocket cost us, which was just generous donor came forward, wanted to do something in memory of a family member and just, just an awesome donation to see from the community, so.
Do you recall how much that was?
Exactly. You could probably speak to that. You're aware of it. So, you remember exactly?
It was a $15,000 contribution.
And the reason, the reason why is the Lucas wasn't exactly 15,000. It may have been, give or take. So, of course, that's the number I'm focused in my head, how much we had to purchase it for. But it covered the cost and we were just grateful for that. We actually were able to, you know, not use other grant money to, you know, to purchase that because of the generous donation. So very grateful for that.
Okay. All right, any other questions?
Do you mind giving us an update with Lake Mills, how that's going and, you know, what that means for the IGA and for the villagers of Cambridge?
Yep. Yeah, great question. So I did make just a few notes so we could kind of talk about what's, what I have the ability to talk about and what is, what is fact versus, you know, what's just fiction or floating out there. So the fact is, we don't have an agreement, you know, with the town or the city. Matter of fact, since the last time we met, the city has chosen Ryan Brothers Ambulance, which is a private ambulance service that serviced other communities in the area to provide city services. We are, however, continuing to work with the Town of Lake Mills, which as you may or may not know, is already in our IGA. So we currently provide services to the Town of Lake Mills through the intergovernmental agreement that you, your village belongs to. And we currently provide 5% to 7%, give or take, depending on whether you look at population or you look at, you know, area. And Town of Lake Mills has expressed through a vote and through, with the commission, that they would like us to do 100% of their community. So again, they're already, they are already within the district and already on the IGA. There would have to be adjustments made to the IGA. The commission can only take a vote based on their representation, how we interpret the IGA. And I interpret the IGA as that that final vote will have to come to the communities. So it has to go to each individual community, as we've discussed with some other IGA adjustments, in order to get, you know, to change the IGA permanently, to add or subtract or add areas. So we do have another community that's also expressed interest and made an initial vote. To my understanding, that was Milford. And I have had some brief discussions with them. They are up along the interstate. There are also other communities that are interested and we've had discussion with that would like to join the district. They see it as, at least I do, and some members of the commission, many hands make lighter work. They're looking at pooling the money, the resources, the equipment together and trying to make the district, you know, more financially sustainable and more sustainable through personnel and equipment. I'm sure the forefathers in the, you know, in the 1950s, when they created this district, I'm sure that that was their thinking, that, you know, one standalone community, if you were to do it today, I could give you a number to provide EMS-only services, and that's approximately $550,000 to service your community today with just your community standalone. That is the approximate bid that Ryan Brothers gave to Lake Mills as well for a standalone service. What do you pay today? Well, you pay much less, substantially less than that because we have five or four other communities that are within the district. So the thought process is, at least for quite a few of the commission members, maybe not a majority. And then my thought process has been and will continue to be that we need to look at growing and expanding. Our current district numbers are very manageable at 600. And some numbers, to give you an example, most communities start looking to add an additional ambulance around the 900 to 1,000 mark. So we're quite hundreds of calls away from even thinking about a second ambulance, and we already have a second ambulance. The community made a commitment many years ago before me and the current commission to have a second ambulance. So our conversations are still ongoing with Lake Mills Township and Milford. There has been votes by their community, but I don't want to talk for them. I don't want to say how many more votes they have to take. One community said they had to take two votes to do it. Another community said they had to take votes and have an electors vote. So they can only speak to that. I know our commission also is well-aware that that would have to be brought before the separate communities, all five communities, yourself included, in order to make that IGA change permanent.
And it has to be unanimous?
To my understanding, according to the IGA, it has to be five of five. Yes, sir.
So is this just for EMS service?
This is just for EMS services.
Extended to Lake Mills, the, okay.
I will not, I will not speak for Cambridge Volunteer Fire Department, but certainly, they have not been involved in the talks. It's just been EMS services. And they have not been, they may have been present at some of the meetings, but they have not been asked to provide services, to my knowledge. I could let you ask them that.
I'm just going to ask, so the fire department currently covers the 5% of the Town of Lake Mills? Yes. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
They're just sitting directly behind you.
Yeah, that's why I was like.
Okay.
Can you talk through how it would work logistically if we provide 100% service for the Town of Lake Mills?
Sure. So that's part of the discussion and why there hasn't been final decisions made. So we're talking with the state of Wisconsin. We're talking with each community. Our commitment from the very beginning, including in writing, has been to them, we cannot serve your entire community from our station in Cambridge. There is just, we are not comfortable with the response times. Yes, we do have long response times in our district now. For example, we have Utica area, Town of Christiana, and some areas in Rock, or in Oakland, that will have substantial response times, 12 minutes or maybe longer, depending on weather. And a majority of the district, about 40% of it, we would just not be willing and able to cover with a reasonable response time from Cambridge. So that's how our talks have started with them and how they continue. They would have to find a location. The commission, including Mr. McNally, have been crystal clear with them that the expenses to the township, just like your stake in the district, we can't pass on Village of Cambridge money to cover the Town of Lake Mills. So it's been made crystal clear from the beginning that you would be, they would be responsible for finding a building, they would be responsible for housing the ambulance. That has to come 100% out of their pocket and they're aware of that. That's something that we've put in writing from the beginning and also verbally. Right now, logistically, we could cover, and our commitment with them is we could cover about 40, 45%. We're still in talks with how much, and that's from the Cambridge station.
How would you keep separate the financials?
So, pretty straightforward. We've bid them a per capita rate and you pay an equalized value rate. Quite frankly, they would be getting a great deal because equalized value is substantially higher. But equalized value in our IGA is determined through the fire department and through EMS. And as you both have pointed out and we're all, most of us are aware of, it's EMS only. So we've come up with a per capita. I was quite pleased when Ryan Brothers presented their per capita for Lake Mills area, including the town. Our numbers were actually more expensive. Why? Because I'm making sure that we don't pass the expenses on to you. So we cannot and will not fund another community, although we have five in the district now. We just can't fund other communities' emergency services through our current budget. So we're planning to grow the budget. That bid is approximately $110,000 plus revenue. And so revenue is also estimated to be approximately another $100,000. So that would grow the district budget, and that includes fire. That would grow the district budget by approximately $200,000.
So would the 5% continue to be equalized value and the other 95% of the Town of Lake Mills would be per capita?
That is how it's been presented.
Okay.
But that would go before you and the rest of the boards to figure that out at the end and work with those numbers. We're trying to make it as clean as we possibly can and make that presentation, you know, very understandable. And we understand that the biggest concern that we're hearing from constituents like yourself and other boards is, hey, we have this budget, there's five, there's five of us in here, we need to make sure that these expenses aren't being passed on, or, you know, more than they should be. We should not be incurring more expenses. It should be a savings. And what we're hoping is that when the forefathers did this in 1950s and they've continued to keep this district, you know, going forward, there was wisdom in that, many hands make lighter work, more money, more resources, and to keep that moving forward with the EMS, growth of the EMS district. Last year, as you'll see in the notes, I'll just point out that it was, you know, somewhere around 80 to 83% of the district is EMS. So that's typical, that's nationwide. It'll vary versus rural, versus urban, and City of Madison numbers may vary. But we're seeing about an 80% on a national average is EMS in any fire and EMS department, 80% of the responses.
Okay. All right, George, Paul, thank you very much for coming here today.
I hope I answered your questions for some.
An operations update. So we appreciate it.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you. I'm going to now open this up to public comment. I don't know if, if anybody wants to speak. This is your time. How many folks would like to speak? I see one. Okay. Jana, if you can come up, introduce yourself, please. Give you two and a half minutes. Can somebody time this?
My name is Jana Evans. I am here to talk about a portion of the Cambridge IGA. The Cambridge Volunteer Fire Department has attended several meetings of various municipalities to voice their concerns about the proposed changes to the intergovernmental agreement. The Cambridge Volunteer Fire Department has communicated with those municipalities and trustees, they function very well. They continue to have decent numbers responding to calls in a timely fashion. Meeting and trainings are well-attended, functional, and documented. Their membership numbers and leadership structure is strong. The changes to the IGA are and continue to be unnecessary. Since a short meeting in January with Mark Cook, Mark McNally, and attorney Steve Zack, which has been the only meeting that included some fire personnel, there has been no further communication regarding this proposed change with fire department staff, nor has it been an item listed on any open meeting agenda for any municipality since the Cambridge Fire and EMS Commission members made the motion to change the IGA back in November. This process is continuing to cost all of us significant taxpayer dollars for attorneys and others involved in the process. The proposed new full-time paid position of a combined EMS and fire chief will certainly cost substantially more to us taxpayers. It is anticipated, if this change is made, additional costs for added full-time paid positions within the fire department will also increase our tax responsibilities and will be the tip of the iceberg in further and future spending. It is reported the call volume for the Cambridge Volunteer Fire Department is approximately 200 calls per year, which does not warrant these changes. I remind you that this proposed change was not requested by the Cambridge Volunteer Fire Department. It is not coming from a need within the fire department and the fire department personnel have not been involved with creating this expensive proposal. In addition, they continue to communicate that they do not want the change. Given our current financial climate, as a taxpayer in the district that is served by the Cambridge Volunteer Fire Protection Services, I do not understand why any of the municipalities would authorize above-proposal or anticipated significant expenditures for something that is unnecessary. We have a fully functional, totally volunteer fire department that continues to operate successfully and has volunteer members that remain dedicated to serving their community where they live at a much lower cost than what we would be burdened with in the proposed changes. To keep the community informed, on April 18th, the Town of Oakland and Town of Christiana held their annual meeting of electors. At both meetings, an advisory motion was made, seconded, and approved by the electors to reject the proposed changes to the Joint Fire and Emergency Services Agreement, also known as the intergovernmental agreement, that was approved by the Cambridge Community Fire and EMS Commission on November 10th of 2022. Thank you.
All right. I'll open it one more time. Does anybody else want to speak? Okay, seeing that, we're going to move on to approval of the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Okay. Discussion, questions, anything?
I did not see anything this time.
All right. Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Okay. I'm going to give the president's report, but it's going to be, it'll be very short here. On April 27th of this week, the, Jana brought this up, there is going to be a closed session, meeting of the commission and the Board of Directors of the Fire Department. So they will, we're hoping to sit down and to talk with them about concerns.
Excuse me?
Yes, sir.
Including the Board of Directors of the Fire Department?
The Board of Directors of the Fire Department, just the board.
Who's that request been made through? None of us know anything about that.
I thought that that had been forwarded by Mr. Cook to the chairperson of the Board of Directors. I think it's scheduled for Thursday night, 6:30, Town of Christiana.
This is all new.
Okay. Well, are you on the board?
Yeah, I'm the fire chief and I should have got that notification.
Okay, if you're on the board, you know, then you should get it. I don't know who that was sent to.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. And then on May 11th, and this is going to involve all of us, as well as Rockdale, Christiana, Lake Mills, and Oakland. The five municipalities are going to be meeting here at 6:30 to go over, and this will be in a closed session, to talk about the intergovernmental agreement and the concerns and why things need to be looked at and discussed, considered. And so that's on the intergovernmental agreement. So that's May 11th.
Why is that enclosed session? Why wouldn't that be an open session?
Because it will deal with public funds. And there's, I think there's two prongs. So I think for the April 27th meeting, my understanding is in that case, personnel matters because those are personnel under which that entity has jurisdiction. In our case, since they're not personnel of the entire communities so directly, it's the public funds that are implicated in the, in the IGA. it's the public funds that are implicated in the IGA.
Okay. All right. So, that's my update and, you know, what I've been working on.
What time is the meeting on May eleventh?
Six-thirty.
Is there a reason why we haven't received an email or anything informing us to set time aside for that?
No. I mean, there isn't, not that I'm aware of. I'm just bringing it to your attention tonight.
Do you, do you think maybe you should actually invite all the people who are involved in the meeting?
They will all certainly be getting an invitation.
Okay.
Okay. Anything else? All right. Library Board, we don't have anybody that's attending the meetings right now, correct? So, we'll dispense with that. Planning Commission.
Oh, yeah. We just met before this meeting. We met with Jason from MSA. He went over the questions. There were the questions on our survey that we're going to be having. We went over the questions themselves. There was a lot of great discussion. They did take our feedback from the last Plan Commission meeting and changed a lot of the questions. I shouldn't say a lot of them. They tweaked them. And then they also provided some feedback on better information about what they're trying to get at with certain questions. Overall, the Plan Commission seemed very satisfied with the results. That was all we discussed.
Okay. That just happened. Chuck, anything that you saw?
No, we're in a much better place with the questions, I think. We're going to get some really good data. We're targeting numbers, try to get four hundred responses. And we got a plan for distribution on Facebook and all that stuff, so we're trying to get that disseminated appropriately.
All right. So, you're trying to make sure that when that does become available, we get four hundred folks, so. Okay. All right. Thank you. Let's see. Director of Public Works, Todd, can you come up and introduce yourself and give us an update?
Hi, Todd. I'm the director of Public Works. We're starting, we're starting our repairs on, from damage from the snowplows. We're starting to work on the vineyards a little bit, too, on that. We got rid of those stone for you. They were big.
Is that where that big stone came from, that you put behind the building?
Oh, that's one of them.
That's one of them?
Yeah. That will, that will back up that corner, if you notice that corner's starting to wash out. Thanks for picking some of that stuff up. I saw you pick some of that stuff. Appreciate it. Tomorrow, I believe, we're picking up cold mix because it's finally at hand. So, we'll be going, we'll be going at that again. And we got the picnic tables out in the parks now. We're trying to get the parks up and running. I actually added a couple picnic tables down here because nobody ever seems to do that down here, down in this little corner down here. I figured people that drink coffee would probably want to be there. Be a nice place to sit. And.
Where are you talking, the little park right on Main Street?
Where the man and the fish is?
Yeah.
Nobody puts picnic tables down there or anything. It's just, it's just an empty grass spot.
That is owned by the village.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I think it's great.
Just seemed like a good thing to do.
I love it. Yeah, I think that's fantastic. Good idea.
And we've been cleaning up Veterans Park, and, you know, we're getting things cleaned up. And mowing is starting.
Can you put the signs up again for Crossing Highway Twelve down there, right by that little park? We've had those before, and then we take them down in the winter.
You mean stop for the crosswalk?
Yeah.
You mean the center thing?
Yeah.
Yep. I got to put them together. Have to put them together yet. We got brand-new ones because the other ones have been run over so many times that they just don't stand up anymore.
Yeah. Try to avoid what happens to that.
They come in very handy by, the one that you put out by the BP and by the Piggly Wiggly, come in very handy because people just don't slow down there.
Somebody just don't slow down there either. They come in like a.
Well, the State Patrol almost hit somebody there one morning, going across to the Piggly Wiggly, somebody was. So, that was, that was one of our ideal spots for one of those.
Absolutely. Good.
So, now that we think that we're done with the snow. We're going to, we're going to go with that and get those out. I'm just hoping we're done with that because we need to be done with that. And otherwise, we're crossing our fingers for the sweeper, possibly tomorrow. They had to cancel out the first one because they didn't, they couldn't make it there. And that's training, so they have to train us to operate the new sweeper. Because I can't wait to see that. I want to see clean curbs. It's killing me. You know, you can only do so much to keep the curbs clean, especially when people want to throw stuff back out on them.
I understand there was a water main break over on Lawn Street?
Lawn Street, there was a water main break. That was last Friday. And that's all taken care of. Asphalt company's already given a bid. So, that'll be done pretty soon.
I want to, I want to thank, if you could pass it on to Derek. I received a compliment.
And Cody.
Yes, and Cody.
Cody was right there with him, and Jay, too.
Yeah. What time did that break?
I was, I was out there at like four-thirty in the morning.
Yeah. Do you guys have a way of monitoring when that happens, or?
No. I got a phone call from Central Dispatch, which is nine-one-one.
Yeah.
And they said, you have a water main break. And the county was down there. The county was down there waiting for me to get there.
Okay.
So, I organized everything and, before I took off, because I was actually had the day off, and I organized all that and got those guys rolling, and they did the rest, and they did well.
Pass on our compliments.
They actually, they actually only had to put in like five hours overtime out of the whole thing between.
Wow. That's really good.
Yeah. I think it was like five or ten hours, you know, between the two of them, I think it was five apiece. So, they did really well.
Yeah. People were impressed. Called up and thanked, thanked me, so wanted to pass that on. Okay. Anything else for Todd?
And I have one more thing. I want to thank Lisa for everything she's been doing. She's been, she's been hanging in there and doing things, you know, to help us out and, you know. So, I just wanted to let you know that she's there.
All right. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Anything else?
Meeting tomorrow night?
You bet. I'm on to that.
Good. Thanks, Todd.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. Well, Lisa, you have to be feeling good. So, now we'll, we'll talk to you for a little bit.
Yep. Working with Bellman and Associates on the financials. Bank reconciliations are almost done through the end of the year. They'll then begin the year in documentation needed for audit and so forth. Derek and Vicki have been working tirelessly to get the PSC stuff to them. That's the next thing, once the end-of-year stuff is done, PSC report has to be filed. Then we'll work on the state stuff and then move on to the audit. State and federal quarterly reports for the first quarter, we've been working on. Flooring for the Amundson Center. At the last meeting, we noticed we're having issues. That's going to be taken up at the Public Works meeting tomorrow, beginning on the annual liquor licensing renewals. While Number Three Project will be starting. They were still waiting on the tanks.
We actually had a meeting on that. I'm sorry. We had a meeting on that this morning with MSA. It was just, it's a three-construction meeting. They're waiting on, they're waiting on the tanks. They're hoping to see the tanks by Monday or Tuesday because they'd like to have them, they're going to send freight, and they would, they would like to have them there, crane them in. They need a crane to put them in.
So, we did send out a letter to all the neighboring properties, letting them know this would be starting shortly. Number of different project meetings, some of which will be discussed later in the agenda. Closing out the April election, so.
Okay.
Moving on with stuff.
All right. Questions for Lisa?
Thanks for the work you're doing, Lisa.
Yeah. You're doing a good job here, and it sounds like a guy in the field. At least recognize that, so thank you very much. We appreciate it. All right. Moving on, item seven, bills. What do we got here?
First run was in the amount of one hundred seventy-three thousand, seven seventy-five and twenty-four cents. Second run in the amount of twenty thousand, one thirty-one and fifty-seven cents for a total of one ninety-three, nine oh six and eighty-two cents.
I make a motion to pay the bills in the amount of one hundred ninety-three thousand, nine hundred and six dollars and eighty-two cents.
I'll second.
Okay. We've got a motion. Second. Questions, concerns, issues?
I actually did have a couple questions. The American line leak, does Water and Sewer pay that?
Yes.
It's just coming, okay, we're just seeing it. Same with the limestone from the joint limestone.
And some of those bills come with both village and, so we do it, but it is coded separately.
It's coding separately, okay. I couldn't, I was, I was looking at the accounting codes, and I'm like, I see they're not the same. So, I'm assuming one of this is Water and one of this.
Five hundred would be Water, six hundred is Sewer, one hundred is the village.
Yeah, and I know Library is a separate one, too, so, okay, great. And then the other question I had was the ATV signs?
Yeah.
I thought that those were being paid by the club.
Jefferson County, that was, then you may be able to explain better. Jefferson County helped to.
They came in and drilled the holes.
To locate the ones in Jefferson County.
They wanted the state, we were going, we were going to go with a different hole system, and the state would absolutely not do it. They wanted it the way that they wanted it, and then if they weren't going to change their minds, they're a US highway. They're going to tell you what they want to do.
Oh, absolutely. Okay. All right. So, so while the signs themselves were paid for, because we had to bring them in and have them drill, then we covered that cost.
So, the county came in to help do those for Jefferson.
Yeah, yeah. After what you just told me, I think we got a deal, so I'm not going to say anything about it.
Well, I'm not being real good with Tim, Tim's sake. I keep him in contact with him as much as I can.
Nice, nice.
I hope you have him on your side.
All right. Those were the only questions I had. Thank you.
Anybody else? Lisa, I had one, but I don't know if I'm in the right area, and it had to deal with Fuel Man.
Yeah.
Was this a check? Because I can't see it now.
No. On the bottom of the signature page, we did do two payments online for that.
Okay.
We did not pay late fees and finance charges because we didn't have access to the accounts. Judy did just finally get us hooked up where she and I have access to the accounts now.
All right. Have you been able to get all the credit cards back? Because you're no longer using Fuel Man, correct?
We are no longer using them. The account is closed. We do not have all the cards back yet.
Okay. But they couldn't use them now anyway.
No.
All right. So, there were, what, ten cards and two or?
Nine cards. We have seven back.
All right. Seven out of nine. Okay. That's where I saw it. All right. That was the only question I have. Anything else? Roll call, please.
Franklin.
Yes.
Whitworth.
Yes.
Hollenbeck.
Yes.
Phelps.
Yes.
Brian Egg. McNally.
Yes. All right. Bills are passed. Thank you. Okay. Now, we're going to get into new business, and I see some people here for this. So, we'll start off. Eight A, Lions Club, proposed pavilion, walking paths, road parking lot requests, recommendation from Economic Development Committee and Plan Commission. Is there anybody here from the Lions Club that would like to speak about this? Hello, sir. Can you identify yourself?
Chris Kruger, representing the Cambridge Area Lions Club. The Lions, as you, most of you probably know, have a clubhouse out by the village fishing ponds that we've operated and maintained for probably a decade or so. And we have some funds that we would like to consider appropriating to the construction of an open-sided pavilion directly to the east of the clubhouse, the building. And the idea there would be is to make this publicly available. The Lions would operate, maintain, and rent out the access to this facility in the same manner that we have been for the clubhouse. When it's not rented, it would be available to the public to enjoy and use. Simply providing some shelter with a roof that, that could keep people out of the elements, kind of extend their, their pleasure out there at the fishing ponds. So, what we wanted to do is ask the village if they would consider giving us approval to build and construct this pavilion. And I'm sure there's going to be some questions on that. I'm happy to answer that. The other aspects of the proposal would be, in addition to maintaining the footprint and extending our current lease and operation to include the pavilion, is to take over some, I wouldn't say operational control, but more improvement opportunities to the approximate ten acres of woodland that lies to the east from the building to the creek, and then to the south to where the village dump is or receptacle area. The idea there would just be to work with some of our youth development groups, the Boy Scouts, other community ecologic clubs, to develop some walking paths through the woodlands, maybe make some just nature-like improvements to that. Just make an overall more useful property. The idea would be the village would maintain the ownership and operation of that property. We're not looking to take control of it, but just to give us some opportunities to make some improvements to the woodlands. And then a third aspect of what our proposal is, the road, as many of you know from the end of the pavement of lagoon down to the actual lagoons, is usually in pretty rough condition, and fall, winter, and spring, it's really treacherous to get down there. We're looking at the opportunity to improve that road and have the village make some commitments to paving it at some point in the future. Now, we understand this isn't in the current budget, but we want to have enough foresight to say, if we're making improvements to the ponds, that's a really highly-used area for people that just enjoy nature, walk, fish. That's a real economic aspect and part of economic development here for the community to have a place to go and enjoy yourselves. So, we would, we would propose that at some point here, we could work toward the improvement of that road to a paved road. And that would include the parking area in front of the Lions Clubhouse and the fishing ponds. So, that's just kind of our general proposal to the Village Board. We presented this same proposal to the Economic Development Committee and the Planning Commission two weeks ago.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Lions Club.
To construct a pavilion east of their clubhouse and to work to create and improve the woodlands for walking areas, et cetera, in the area as well. At this time, I would not include in the motion any improvements to the paving of that road, but would think we'd consider it when we do the one thirty-four intersection for that road.
I'll second.
All right.
One question.
Yep.
How big is that pavilion that you're proposing?
It's, it's kind of to be determined at this point. We'd want to make it in such a way that it was, you know, maybe, I would say at least maybe four picnic tables could fit under there. I think that would be kind of the size, minimum size we'd be looking at. But certainly, we want to work with the village and understand, you know, what is practical to construct on that site and then really what our funds are capable of supporting. That would be, that would be kind of our general ideas. Probably four to six picnic tables under there, so pretty good size pavilion.
Thank you.
Todd, did you guys smooth out the gravel on that road out there?
Yep.
There was some extra gravel we had. I said, we are taking this down here, and we are going, because I have not found some down that road. But we're going to get some gravel, and the Town of Christiana said that they'd bring the grader down and greater properly.
Sweet.
Thank you.
That's, that's the plan.
So, we'll need to amend our lease agreement that we've got right now with the Lions Club to include the pavilion area. It won't include, we won't actually be leasing any of the areas that you're going to improve in the wooded area. But have you thought about or talked about whether you enter into some sort of agreement to maintain those trails? Or are you just thinking of constructing it, and then the maintenance would come?
or are you just thinking of constructing it and then the, the maintenance would come to the village?
Yeah, I guess we'd have to have that conversation, you know. Our forward-thinking, the Lions have a ninety-nine-year lease on, on the building out there. We've had, you know, the history of the Boy Scouts here in, in town, and, and so we do have ways to maintain those, and I think in good faith, we would, we would work toward that. But ultimately, it's the village property, so, you know, it wouldn't, wouldn't be our expectation that the village is out there mowing it and, you know, keeping it trimmed like that. It's more, you know, it's natural walking trail. Well, I'm thinking like in, in the woods, you know, when, no, that's, we're not looking to plant grass or something like that. It's, it's more like just, you know, making some pathways and things like that.
So unless I got other direction from the Village Board, I would just draft the lease to, to cover the pavilion, but keep all of the other terms largely the same. So, that means the Lions Club handles the maintenance and repair. We would handle casualty and fire. Let's see, what else? We mow out there.
We have the cost of insurance.
Mm-hmm.
The village does?
No, the, sorry, sorry, the Lions Club has, has insurance. Sorry, I, I, did I say that wrong?
Yeah, yeah. So you're going to, you're going to insure this building?
If I remember our conversation, there was a catastrophe coverage versus a more of a, a maintenance insurance type.
That's right. Fire, yeah, fire and casualty, we cover, but they do have like basic insurance for the, for the premises that's required in their lease.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we would look to, to do the same with the pavilion.
Yes.
Okay. All right, any other questions?
I don't have a question. I just think this would be a really great addition to the community, so I would really encourage the, my fellow board members to approve.
Okay.
And then the lease agreement would come back to the board for, for once it's drafted.
All right, well, we've got a motion and a second to proceed with the, the lease here and allowing you to go ahead and put up the building and do your walking trails through the woods. Correct? Pretty much what we have. All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Carries. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Great, congratulations.
Hope you have a ribbon-cutting party.
I have to get my husband to join the club, Lions Club, so they can help now.
It'll be ready in thirty days, right?
Next time it hits eighty degrees.
Okay, well, that's, yeah, a year from now.
All right. Okay, move on. Class B Beer License, Wisconsin Art Hub, doing business as Art Hub. J.C. Eckerman, is she here? Okay, Lisa?
I'll just, I'll make a motion to approve the class B beer license for the Wisconsin Art Hub LLC, doing business as Art Hub.
Okay. Have a second.
I'll second.
All right. Further discussion? No?
Yeah, I don't know what this business is.
Do you remember the premier, where Premier Couture used to be?
No.
So, right downtown. Do you know where the antique store is?
Yes.
Okay, like right next to the, in, right next door, I think, is where the building is. She's opening up an art hub, which is basically a building that is going to have a number of different stations, where you can do a number of different kinds of art.
Okay.
There's going to be classes that will brought in and things like that, so I'm assuming the class B licenses, if every once in a while someone would like to enjoy a beer while they're making ceramics, they can do that.
Sounds good.
Or glass of wine.
Or glass of wine, yes.
No wine?
No wine.
No beer.
Just beer?
The wine license, you have to have a certain percentage of your profits coming from food to be able to get a state license for wine.
All right.
So, it can be wine coolers made with malt.
I was going to say, but in the beer, so, yeah, you've got to get a Seagram's wine cooler.
The wine statutes are different.
It's all good.
Yep.
Okay, all right. Got a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? It carries. Okay, item eight C, recommendation from the Economic Development Committee regarding the placement of Welcome to Cambridge signs. Paula.
Jane?
Engelsdad, yes, at Lake Ripley Country Club, who said they have this on their agenda for their May fifteenth meeting for approval for the, we sent them quite a while ago a draft easement.
Yes.
For, for placement of the signs.
And then we did reach out to Frank Peregrin. Economic Development had discussion. We had originally talked possibly on the side by where the new quitrip would be going in, not knowing that timeline. Economic Development recommended, next to the winery building, we have the retaining pond there. Between the retaining pond and the Woodhaven subdivision, land there that the sign could possibly be placed there, Frank would be open to discussion on placing it there. So...
Okay.
Up to the board if that was the recommendation from Economic Development, and if the board says okay, we will then work with Frank on discussions and easements and so forth.
Should I make a motion on that? Okay, I'd like to make a motion for, to place the West Side Welcome to Cambridge sign on the north side of Highway twelve, near the, the retaining pond between the woodland and the winery property.
And I'll second that. This is something that's been going on.
Well, that's what, the Economic Development, I mean, we've got the signs, the bank, Bank One is nice enough to be storing these beautiful signs. We finally got, but they're stored in Bank One, and we'd like to get them out. So, we figure if, th- this is probably the best solution to actually getting them out, so we can actually welcome people.
All right. So we got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Passes. Okay, you know what to do.
So then, Jane, you're going to work on an easement agreement or whatever with Frank and, all right, thank you so much.
All right. Next item, eight D, park reservation, West Side Park Cambridge Arts Council for July twenty-second and twenty-third. The Fire Fest, the sculpture will be, begin building on June twenty-eighth.
I'll make a motion to approve the park reservation for West Side Park for the Cambridge Arts Council Fire Fest on July twenty-second and twenty-third.
Okay, second. All right, any discussion?
I thought the letter to us explaining exactly what they've done to prepare, what they're going to continue to do to prepare, how they're working, that stuff, I thought that was very, very good. And with how much business Fire Fest brings to Cambridge, I just am very much in support of this.
I, I am. Did, did, have Lori talk to you? Because I know that, I read somewhere in here, they're going to change the timing of that next year.
Yep, they're going to move it to June. It'll be June sixth, seventh, eighth.
June eighth and ninth.
Hi, Mark. Did you want to come up and talk about this?
Yeah, Lori, I think did a really good job of trying to fill her shoes, which is a tough chat task to do, but she's on vacation. But, yeah, we're moving to June. It just sort of seemed that in July, it really ran into some inclement weather in the past. Anybody that's been down there during lightning storm, you know, such as this last year, and it's usually in the caves. So, we're moving it to the second weekend, I believe, June full weekend. It's the same weekend that we used to have Pottery Festival.
Oh, nice.
In the past. And we've always had really good weather. The only time it's really rained is like late Sunday evening, so we're doing that.
Okay. Any other questions? All right.
I just wanted to make something for the Arts Council. At Plan Commission, there was talk about how we can get like pop-up shops, and there was, maybe we can get some for around, around that time, because we have some vacant shops downtown around Fire Fest time to use that space to, for whatever purpose, but I just wondered, before I forgot, sorry. I'm pointing at you because...
It's all on you.
So, you're, you're, you're pointing at me because...
Because I know you're into the Arts Council.
Okay.
All right.
I'd happily work with you.
All right.
Okay. Okay, well, we've got a motion and a second for the park reservation at the West Side Park. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Carries. Okay. We're going to move on. Item eight E, temporary class B wine and beer license for the Arts Council. Same dates, July twenty-second, twenty-third. Paula?
I'll make a motion to approve the temporary class B wine and beer license for the Cambridge Arts Council in West Side Park for Fire Fest, which is July twenty-second and twenty-third.
I'll second.
Okay. Again, I read this, they have like a barricade or something, it was ten feet away.
So what we do, they, they place signs every ten feet that say no alcohol behind this, this point. It's been really successful in the past. I don't think we've ever really had anybody...
No, in chat, it's, you know, like maybe we had in the past, you said, you know, just this low-key event that they've never had.
And we have, we have, they have one like beer wagon that gets locked at night, and, and that's where the beer and wine come out of, so.
Okay. All right. Got a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Carries. All right. Next item, eight F, street permit, Cambridge Arts Council closing of Pleasant Street July twenty-second, twenty-third for the Fire Fest. Paula?
I'll make a motion to approve the street permit for the Cambridge Arts Council closing of Pleasant Street for Fire Fest on July twenty-second and twenty-third.
Do we include Water Street at the same time, Brian?
They're separate.
If they're, it's too separate.
But can we put them together?
Can we put them together? Do they need to be separate?
If you make the motion saying it's for both of those.
And, and I would also make that same motion to include the Water Street closings as well.
Does anybody want a second?
Second.
Okay.
Beat ya.
Okay, way to go, Tim. We got a motion and a second.
So, I do just want to say that the Arts Council is always very, very concerned about making sure that those streets are open to local traffic. So, just like in years past, we will make sure that all of the local traffic can continue to flow, and that, oh, and that closing Water Street is just so much nicer from a safety perspective than having to navigate the traffic, so thank you for that.
Okay. And then the Fire Department, you guys know that that'll be closed and...
We can know the other way around.
Yeah. Okay.
Still going to have some kind of access if there's an emergency on those roads.
And, and there always is. There's always, the, the food, the only portion of the road that's kind of blocked on both sides is the second half nearest to Water Street of Pleasant, but we always make sure that the food trucks are on one side or they're on the other side, so there is room to run between if we need to.
And then, as long as we can get, continue to get down Allen.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that, that, that's, it's usually open to Allen. I mean, the road's officially closed, but it's, but there are no food trucks on the north side of Allen Street.
Okay.
So.
All right. We've got a motion and a second here for Pleasant Street and Water Street. Any further questions? Call the matter to vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Okay, eight H, I think this is supposed to be placement of statue.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, okay. I saw that.
Statue?
I do that all the time. And, and I think this is really more informational, because they're looking to replace the one that's up front.
But because it's on village property, they need approval to...
Oh, got it, okay. So I will make a motion to approve the placement of the Cambridge, the twenty-twenty-three Fire Fest statue to the placement in front of the Amundson Center.
Yep, and they have said they will take down the one that's currently there. They are asking if we want as part of the motion, village assistance to move...
Yes.
The new statue, since it's going from village property to village property, if the village could help move that.
And, yeah, and I would include in that motion to have our Public Works Department assist with the move of the statue from West Side Park to the placement area.
Okay. Does anybody want to make a second before we get discussion?
Second.
Okay, I've got discussion. Can we just throw in there, I don't want to say a rider, but if anything happens when we're moving the statue from the park...
Oh, yeah, that's, they, they...
Up to here with our guys.
They know the risks, they're all, okay, yeah.
We're not going to be held responsible.
They're pretty good at strapping that thing in.
Okay.
No, and, and, I mean, anytime you move any kind of something like that, they, they understand the risks they're undertaking, so...
Okay, all right.
They're just really grateful, because you've got a really nice piece of equipment that works well for it, so.
Well, they're really good at it. When they strap it all together, it actually does not move in there, so.
Okay. And then my other question is, what is it going to be?
Don't know.
This is always the big mystery. Okay.
It did suggest when Lori brought paperwork in that in the past, the village, and we get questions upstairs, if possible, and it's something she said they could look at in the future, is having explanations at the statues of what they are. The one that's out there right now, I know it's some folklore thing, but we don't know the history, so people ask us and we're like, I don't know for sure, you know. So, if plaques could be put with the statues explaining the meaning, or, is that something they'll look into?
Yeah. Well, before I call the matter to vote, nothing beats the statue, it's right here. This, this one rocks. I mean, the, the wild thing, whatever. I, I know it's not the wild thing, okay, I'm sorry.
It is inspired by, inspired by.
Yeah, it's toes, there's three or four instead of two or something like that.
Inspired by.
Yeah, okay, all right. But it's, it's a great-looking statue.
Yeah, he did, he did effective stuff. I like, I really love the Four Seasons one that's down by the Court Building.
Oh, okay.
I think that, I just, yeah, I love that one.
All right. It took me a bit to get used to Jonah and a whale, but I'm, I'm...
No, no, it's not Jonah and the whale, it's a man and a fish. That's important.
Okay.
And that's important.
You're right, you're right. This is not, I'm, I, I apologize, Cambridge, it's not a religious, it's just a fish and a guy.
It's just a man and a fish.
Getting swallowed, okay. I'm going to be quiet here. Man, I'm digging.
And put the other one, Jonah the whale, sorry.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Woo. Okay, we got a motion and a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, carries.
And, and I just want to make clear, just because I am voting on all these things, I am in no way a member of the Fire Fest committee, anything else. I do volunteer for the Fire Fest to do stuff. I just really love the Fire Fest so much, that it's probably my favorite thing that happens in Cambridge, and so that's why I'm overly enthusiastic about it.
Well, people from out of town talk about it, too.
I like Fire Fest, and I also noticed that Clay Collective is coming on, but I'll talk more about that at the end of the meeting. Let's see here. We got through, we're on to item eight I, reservation at Veterans Park for the Arts Council on June second, sixteenth, and the thirtieth, July fourteenth, and August fourth, the Summer Concert Series.
I'll make a motion to approve the park reservation in Veterans Park for the Cambridge Arts Council for said dates for the Summer Concert Series.
Second.
Okay, discussion, hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Carries.
Pretty lineup with Vans this year.
Yeah.
Van Halen coming?
Something like that. Trophy husbands, isn't that almost as good?
Sure. Who did you want? Van Halen.
Someday, I've got to talk to you, but not here. Okay, I love Van Halen. Okay, moving on. J, street permit, North Street, Cambridge Arts Council for the same dates, the second, the sixteenth, the thirtieth of June, the fourteenth of July, and August fourth, Summer Concert Series.
Make a motion to approve a street permit for my street, as Mark calls it, street.
The one house on that street?
Just my, my street, all right, for those dates aforementioned.
All right.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, carries. All right. Lots of concerts on your street. All right, Eric.
You charge your admission?
No, it's free.
You have a blast there. Okay. Item K.
When parking's so busy, can I park on your lawn?
I don't know.
You got to hop the curb.
How would you do? I mean, you could.
All right. Okay. Item 8K, appointment of Ted Combié to the Water and Sewer Committee and the Cambridge Oakland Water Commission.
So, there has been a vacant public member seat on the Water and Sewer Committee for quite some time, so Ted would be filling that public position. And when we do a committee assignments, there'd be two village board members appointed. The COWC, in the agreement, the president or their appointee is a voting member and the second village member is named and approved by all. It does not say it has to be a village board member. So, if Ted were appointed to continue to serve on both of these, as he has been, I did let Vicki know I would want on all Water and Sewer agendas, an update from COWC, both Steve Strauss and Ted would be on both committees, but as there wouldn't be a village board member on the COWC, that they would be giving a report to the Water and Sewer Committee.
Okay, so it's legal for us to look at this?
Yep, and we decided to move it up as we are waiting to fill our vacancy and committee assignments are being postponed a little bit, so as we're in the middle of the well project and so forth, to get that seat filled.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to appoint Ted to the Water and Sewer Committee and COWC.
I'll second.
Discussion?
This is as a citizen member, right?
Yeah.
And then, when the board, when we reconvene to figure out who is on what, this is separate from that?
Yeah.
Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Carries unanimously. All right, thank you. Unfinished business. How are we doing with the village treasurer position, Lisa?
We have received a couple applications. I did share with the committee, none with a lot of experience that we're looking for. I do have in the packet, Eric had mentioned the AGA, their information about posting, as well as GFOA, the Government Finance Officers Association, are two options we could look at. There is a cost associated with both of them, but kind of throwing it out to you guys if we want to do more or if we need to change.
I would make a motion to place ads in both the GFOA and 30-day in the AGA.
What does it cost on those?
The 30-day is $295 and the GFOA is $150.
Is $500.
I'll second.
The first one is okay, but the second one is $500?
So, here's what I, here's sort of where I'm at.
Remember when it was put in the newspaper?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we've got, I mean, we've got to get somebody hired and the, what we, the residents we've gotten so far are, have like really no experience at all. So, I'd like to see if we can get someone who has some experience and it seems like our best bet for trying to do that is here. We're not paying salary right now. We're not paying benefits right now. I understand we do have an accounting firm that's doing some work for us, but I think it sort of eans itself out with where we're saving money and where we need to spend money in order to get somebody who might be helpful.
Okay. Anybody else have any comments on this? Chuck, Eric?
I just.
We need to, we need to adjust a little bit, so I think this is necessary. We need to fill this position.
I was going to say the same thing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it is still on the Clerk's site, Treasurers' and Leagues' site as well. Those are free of charge.
Okay. All right. Now, we got a motion and a second, but it involves money, so roll call.
Whitworth?
Yes.
Holland Beck?
Yes.
Phelps?
Yes.
Ryanak? Franklin?
Yes.
McNally?
Yes. All right, let's keep our fingers crossed and hopefully, you know, something will happen here. Okay, 10, item 10, correspondence. We don't have anything, so we'll pass through that. Going on to 11, questions, referrals to staff, future agenda items. The vacant village board seat. We're going to talk about this, Lisa?
Yep. May 9th, we did, the newspaper had an article on the vacant seat. Anybody who's interested, please get information to me in the office. I do have one person who's received information from. Jane and I have talked about it a little, I think, at the May 9th meeting. We were looking at doing a call session at the beginning of the meeting so we can talk to anybody who may be interested. The board could then possibly make an appointment right away. That person gets sworn in and be there for the May 9th meeting. And then the following meeting, we would be doing the organizational and the committee assignments.
Okay, that's the plan. Okay, nothing to act on there.
So, just one interested individual then, correct?
Okay. All right. Okay, upcoming meetings. We've got April 26, Public Works, May 8, Economic Development, along with Plan Commission, May 9, Joint Law Enforcement. We've got our own village board meeting here on the 9th. The 10th is the Library Board. The 11th is the Fire Commission. We've talked about that. Joint meeting of the five municipalities, May 16, Water and Sewer, and May 23 for the Village Board again. And then.
Joint Law Enforcement at 5:30?
And it's not on here, but I'll throw it in. Clay Collective is going on this weekend, so if, actually, no, May 6th, May 6th and 7th. So, it's a big thing here, so.
I'll be in Branson.
Okay, I'll tell them that you're buying a bunch of stuff and you'll swing by. Yeah, okay. Item 13. Anybody care to read this?
Sure, I'll make a motion to convene and to close session per statute 19.8.